I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next we'll move into Administrator Report on the Agenda Posting and Notification of the Meeting to the Media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School and Sugar Camp School via email to Town of Three Lakes, the Town of Monaco, Town of Sugar Camp, and the Demer Library. Media notified via email included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and the media notified by mail was WACD, WATK Radio.
Next we move to Amendments and Approval of Agenda. Are there any amendments this evening?
There are none.
Okay, hearing none. Is someone willing to make a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? Four zero. Next we move to minutes of the July 16th, 2025 Regular Meeting. Is there any corrections or items for concern? If there are none, I will take a motion on the minutes when ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Brian. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I bet that wasn't a huge row.
Next we'll move into Treasurers' Report.
You started without me?
I didn't have a text from you. I didn't know if you something happened, you weren't coming. We're just on the routine approvals. It's gonna be okay, Josh. We made it.
I'll make a motion to approve the check dated July 10th, 2025 through August 13th, 2025 for Compsable Checks number 25260002 through number 25260005, then the checks number 131326 through number 131454, and manual checks number 5910 through number 5931, and wire transfers 202500001 through 202500021 in the amount of $91,438.90, and ACH payroll checks number 90046253 through number 90046370, and manual payroll checks number 1921 through 1988, and manual payroll checks voided slash reversed, number 1921 through 1988, in the amount of $238,673.70 for the total amount of $1,103,112.60.
Did you read that?
Yes.
I'll second.
Did I get a zero wrong?
We have a motion by Mitch, second by Brian. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Josh is back with us. Five zero. Okay, next we move to Public Comments. Are there any comments from visitors regarding Agenda items? We have no visitors this evening, only staff, so I will assume there is none. Next we move into the Administrators' Report.
Yes, we will need to reschedule our annual Board Administrative Staff Planning Retreat. On behalf of the district and the family, we appreciate the ability to postpone the retreat that was scheduled for the same day as the services of one of our students who had passed away. So I have included within Board Docs some suggested dates, and we can talk about that. These are dates that I looked at that did not conflict with the calendar as far as we have homecoming coming up and a few other bigger things. We could consider doing an after, or an evening session, I should say. But what I put out there is, I did include Thursday, September 4th, and Friday, September 5th, which are just right around the corner, and it is the first week of school. But at least we would have a couple of days in, I'm thinking of administrative, administrator responsibilities and getting the year off and running. It's not like the first or second day, so we would probably be okay. Monday, the 8th, Tuesday, the 9th, Wednesday, the 10th, and Thursday, the 11th. Friday, the 12th, I am scheduled out of district, but should that be the only time available, I will just have to miss that meeting if necessary. If those were, any of those were, we would be able to get the retreat in before our regular meeting on September 17. Other options I looked at would be Thursday, the 18th, and Monday, the 22nd. As I noticed and mentioned, Friday, the 19th, is homecoming, so that is an absolute not available day. We would still be looking at potentially a three and a half to four hour, or three to four hour event. We could still schedule it for eight till noon, and if we're done sooner, we can be done, or we could look at an afternoon time if that would work better for you, or if there would be an evening session. I would just need to have a little bit of time to round up staff members that would be potentially able to attend.
Did it during the day on Thursday or Friday, four or five? Would the staff be still able to attend? Would there still be?
We would have to get subs for that three or four hours, but I believe we would have some people willing to do so. I think we should ask principals, is there any conflict that you're seeing? I know it's not great timing, but...
What was the date?
Like, the first week we're back to school, that Thursday or Friday? Purpose trying to be getting it in before that regular board meeting comes up so we can work on goals.
So the fourth or fifth?
Yes.
I don't think we have conflicts. It's just the first week.
It's the first week, yeah.
Mrs. Maney, would it go into the evening? Do you anticipate?
Well, we generally schedule it from like eight to 11:30 or eight till noon. If the board and we all share you'd rather do it afternoon, we could do that. Then we'd do more of a start time like of noon till four, unless we go with a full-blown evening meeting, which with, I'm thinking with principals, Mr. Zeus being principal, or football coach on top of that, we might not have the people we really need at the table too.
Well, and you have parents with, you know, Thursdays and Fridays for sports kids too.
Lots going on already.
And that the fourth is a horrible game.
Is it a home, well, thank you, I did not...
On that evening, but...
I did not see that. But if it was during the day, we would be okay.
The only day that I could do it during the day, because I can't, we're short-staffed now and I can't really request any time off for this fast, would be Friday.
The fifth?
Yeah.
That soon?
I'm working from home that day, so I have flexibility, because that was what I was gonna do the other time, is I was just gonna take a half a day and work a little longer.
Okay.
And they would be fine with that.
Does that work for any of the rest of the board?
Yeah, that works for me, actually.
Okay.
After we go, it's a mess after that, the next two, three weeks.
Okay, so it's better sooner than later?
Yeah.
Okay. Josh, what about you?
I have to look. I will do everything I can to be there.
Steve, Carrie, Mark?
That's fine.
Friday the 5th?
Yep.
Do we want to stick with that eight o'clock timeframe? Do you think that works? I mean, Josh, if you can't be there, you know, we'll make, we'll keep you up to speed as much as possible, but we've done it before when there's been board members who couldn't attend. However, of course...
Sorry.
Not an option.
You don't have to turn your video on.
I'm not sitting at my desk that often.
Well, it sounds like we have the date of September 5th. Because I'm putting this under the discussion here, we could, when we go into the September dates, then make that an approval in those motions for some September dates.
Okay. And so like eight to noon?
Yes.
We do have it for action on this one as well.
Do I have it for action? It's just not popping up for me to say motion, which I must have missed that. So, and Board President, I will let you make the call.
If someone was willing, can we get a motion to have the Board Administrative Staff Planning Retreat rescheduled for Friday, September 5th from the hours of eight to 12?
I'll make a motion to reschedule the annual Board Administrative Staff Planning Retreat to Friday, September 5th from eight to 12 here at Three Lakes.
I'll second.
Was that Mitch or...?
Mitch. We have a motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries.
Can you let us know where, what location we'll be in?
Yes.
Since school?
Yes. It will most likely be right here.
Okay.
Okay, next we move into New Business, starting with the September meeting dates.
A regular meeting will be scheduled for September 17 at 6:00 PM here in Three Lakes in the boardroom.
This is also set up for action, but we do not need it if it is regular.
That is correct.
Okay. Next we will move into Consider Approval of Personnel Report.
All right, under the Personnel Report for this evening, we have the hirings of Alan West as Sugar Camp Elementary Part-Time Custodian, Courtney Hauser is Educational Sign Language Interpreter, Anne Ellis Activities and Athletic Director, Shannon Klein, Sugar Camp Paraprofessional and NAC Driver, Anne Resignations, Phil Update, Junior High Principal, Athletic Activities, Athletic Director, Karen Kobiliewski, Sugar Camp Paraprofessional, NAC Driver, Kim Maney, Junior High Volleyball Coach, and Kim Turlisi, Assistant Food Service Employee.
Any questions or follow-up? If there are none, can I get a motion?
I'll motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented. Second.
We have a motion by Brian, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next we move to Consider Approval of the 2025-2026 Appendix D Extracurricular Payment Schedule and Co-Curricular Step Lane.
We're going to have Caleb go through this with you and provide the updates. Mr. Zeus is not able to attend this evening.
Sure. So, everything is identical to last year with that extracurricular payment schedule, except we bumped everything up 2% as approved by the board in April, I believe it was. So, nothing new there. And then on the co-curricular compensation, just a reminder that this is based off of our lowest teaching salary, and then you see there the different percentages there. So if you're wondering where those numbers come from, you know, it's based off of $51,719. And this was put in last year by Phil and approved last year's.
Any questions or concerns, and if not, if someone is willing to make a motion?
No concerns, just a comment. This is favorable comparatively to other school districts.
We work quite a bit behind where we should have been, and there was quite a bit of inequity between sports, and this at least brought us into comparable of the time spent. So, I appreciate you noting that. It's hard to get coaches and then to keep the longevity factor. That was a big motivation, and I appreciate the work that Phil did on that.
Is there a ready for motion here?
Quick question, one last quick question. Just, so on the extracurricular payment schedule, that's per event, correct?
Yeah, that's per event, so those are all your workers at the volleyball and football, basketball games.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve Appendix E Extracurricular Payment Schedule and Co-Curricular Step Lane Schedule as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitch, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next we move to Consider Approval of Milk Bids for 2025-2026.
Caleb, I'll let you take that too.
We got a whopping one bid, so I'm hoping you'll do this one. So it would be with Prairie Farms again, and we've been with them since I've been here. We've always used Prairie Farms. The bid is within a couple cents of where we were last year on each of the items, and it talks about an escalator based on the raw cost of milk. And when you look at the bid, like if we take last year, for example, the bid in July to where we ended up in June, one, the skim milk went up one tenth of a cent, and then the 1% milk and the chocolate milk went down a couple tenths of a percent, or cent, not percent, cent. So it's basically identical throughout the whole year. So if you're wondering if we'll have any wild fluctuations with prices, it's been pretty steady.
The other company just didn't even, I mean, usually it was the same two, but they just didn't even want to add anything response.
I don't believe they're even servicing our area anymore as of last year.
Yeah, we've been losing them. That first year we sent it to three, and then it was down to two.
Sure.
That can change and they can...
Just one question, maybe completely random. There's posters in the information about lactose-free. Is that something that we're actually, like, we're gonna think about, or is there a reason they just send, the company just send it?
They just included it. When I put the bid, I didn't ask for lactose-free, but it was just included in there.
Okay.
There's also non-refrigerable salts.
Yes, they're shelf-stable also.
I don't know how much of that goes around.
Is the lactose-free, I mean, an option that we should think about providing, if not this year in the future, or is it...
We could. If we needed to, if we had a student that needed lactose-free, we would definitely do that. I mean, we're doing a lot of gluten-free stuff already, and of course, if someone has something in an IEP, we would obviously accommodate that as well. So absolutely open to doing that. It's as easy as just placing the order.
I don't even know if it necessarily needs to be an IEP thing or just simply an option, because I do know of a couple of kids that probably would go that route if they had the option.
Sure, yeah. And the gluten-free thing is not an IEP thing either, but we accommodate.
If there are not any other questions, is someone willing to make this motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Prairie Farms bid as presented.
Second.
Stacy wins. Okay, we have a motion by Josh, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next we move to Consider Revisions of the 2025-2026 Professional Employee Handbook.
The handbook is very, very minimally different than it was from last year. We are nearing the end of the handbook rewriting project that we're doing with Scott Mikesch and WASB. We will be doing it as both a professional staff handbook and as a support staff handbook. We were very much in need to update several policies that were no longer meeting the compliance that were necessary, and in fact, we were missing some policies. So, he had hoped to have it done for this meeting, but that did not work out. He should be finalizing everything within the next couple of the weeks this September is possible. We could have it ready to go for the September regular meeting. I'm not going to make any promises. More importantly, I have communicated with staff that there is minimal changes, but we need to have this because they're back to work now, and I need them, as a condition of their employment, to sign off on what is currently in place. When we get the revisions, we will share this with the staff so they can see the changes. We can get some feedback, and as I explained to them in the message today, actually, that I sent out, a lot of policy work, we cannot wordsmith it, we cannot rewrite what is legally required to be in compliance, but there will be nothing that would be a surprise or something that they would wonder about or question. So that is where the status is. So my request would be that you would make the motion to approve the current status of this handbook for the 25-26 year, and again, knowing that we will probably be revisiting this in the next several months as an updated document.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the handbook as presented? If there are none, is someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Professional Handbook as presented. I'll second.
We have a motion by Mitch, second by Brian. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, which I'm assuming is similar, we go into Consider Revisions of the 2025-2026 Support Staff Handbook.
Correct. And this is ditto from what I just said. Wanted to have it as two separate Agenda items, especially where we are going to have more of that definition of the differences, keeping the teaching-specific professional language out of the Support Staff Handbook. So we would like to approve this for the Support Staff at this time, so we can get that out for their acknowledgement and signature, and we will be bringing this back to you within the next several months.
Anyone ready to make a motion on Support Staff?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Support Staff Handbook as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next we move into the Secclusion and Restraint Report.
You can see that Carrie Volk has provided the documentation for us. Carrie, did you want to read it and answer any questions?
Sure.
Okay.
So as required by the Wisconsin Statute 118.05, all school districts are required to report the number of incidences of seclusion and restraint during the previous school year. So in accordance with that state statute, I'm reporting the following. There have been zero incidents of seclusion and restraint in the Three Lakes School District during the 2024-2025 school year. The total number of pupils who were involved in incidents of seclusion and physical restraint for the 2024-2025 school year was zero, and the number of students with disabilities who were involved in incidents of seclusion and physical restraint for the 2024-2025 school year was zero.
Carrie, just off the top of your head, I know it was zero last year as well. Do you even remember the last time that has been?
Not since I have been here.
Okay.
We try to do a lot of proactive and preventative things. And actually, in our in-service schedule, we had a non-verbal intervention strategy training, which is part of NBCI, but it's just the verbal intervention piece. And unfortunately, something unexpected happened with our trainers, one of our family members, so we had to reschedule it. But it was scheduled for all staff, all support staff and teaching staff. So that will be rescheduled at one of our other in-service dates coming up. So I think a lot of those types of professional work in the in-service that helps with this training, the proactive approaches.
Thank you. Is someone willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Secclusion and Restraint Report as presented.
Second.
Brian beat you that time, right? Or was it me? Was it you?
Yeah.
It was me.
Oh. You're being quiet tonight. A motion by Josh, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Motion carries. Something is in the water tonight. Okay. Next we move to State and Federal Annual Notice Posting Report.
Well, these are just updates that we need to make to bring our policies up to speed. Tonight, looking at 113 Exhibit Federal Notices of Non-Discrimination, this is looking at, we are now going back to the Title IX regulations that were in place prior to the 2024 change, and we actually talked about that last year that they would probably change, which they have because by federal law, they were overturned. So all this did was revert back our language to the original, which is in place. I remember last year, there was questions about whether the 1972 amendments and such still stood. Yes, they do. The reason you're seeing this is our attorney, Scott, did feel that we needed to make sure we got this one in sooner rather than later, so we are in complete compliance with the way that this Title IX law reads. The second most important part of that is it's very important that the Title IX coordinator is named, who is Justin Zeus, the high school principal, rather than just saying the high school principal, which was very common for many districts in the past. And also, it goes ahead and it signifies that Carrie Volk is the director of our Student Services and Special Education, and she will be the contact for 504 and ADA Title II issues that would come up. And so we've got two people, but work in different avenues within this law. Any questions specifically to the updating of this exhibit? If there aren't, we'll move into the Meal Policy and School Meal Account Charges and Collections. Caleb is going to speak to this as well. We wanted to do some research that really much better outlined and reflected what our practices are here at the district. Caleb, would you like to address these policies?
The biggest change, and it's not really a change, it's just more of the highlighting of when a student can charge to their account. If they're in the negative, the board policy has always been that they cannot charge à la carte, or extra milks, or anything that is outside of just the standard breakfast or the standard lunch. And we just wanted to make that more clear. There had been some confusion on, well, if you're not less than 10 negative, we wanted to just make sure that we were following the board policy and really clarifying that. So that's really the only, I guess, change that we're gonna make. But I do want to, I guess, remind the board that the policy does state that we will allow students to charge infinitely into the negative if they are taking those lunches or breakfasts at home. So we don't have a hard stop.
But it does also say we can investigate...
Sure.
...into the reason.
Into the reason.
Yes.
What's the dollar value? It's pretty low, isn't it?
It's one cent in the negative.
Yeah. I mean, is there, can we have some sort of a notification policy that, you know, hey, you've got $10 left in your account? Is there something that we can do?
Is there a?
We could put it whatever.
We can put it whatever. It doesn't have to be negative.
I think we should.
Okay.
Not that I know somebody very personal that's guilty of that.
But it's $10, because I mean, like, my kids don't eat very much, so I like only put a little bit in in case they do.
Yeah.
Yeah. And maybe five, you know, maybe five. Maybe it's 7:50 where it's two meals, but just something where.
Well, I guess if you get notified, a big deal. I don't have to act on it if it's just on positive.
You could technically do two different messages, have the one for the negative, and then you could have another one that says.
Yeah.
Getting lower. Yeah. Which that's nice, because I, yeah, I get that. I get it.
No, that's not great.
Man, my heart, I feel terrible. Dang.
Thankfully, there's an internet application that you can just automatically pay.
That is nice now.
Yeah, but then you get busy and you forget, and then you get the same message the next day that you're still negative. Where if I was getting it at 10, then maybe it'd be.
Still gonna forget.
Quick, it gives me a couple days to remember.
I'll work with Nikita.
Okay. Thank you.
For just Josh.
Obviously, I don't need additional notifications.
I'm gonna ignore the $10 plus and then wait for the $10 in the negative.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, there's nobody in this room that has not had a negative.
Oh, that makes you feel so much better.
It happens, you know? Little management, are we doing that? Are you doing more?
For the, what's that? For the?
Posting? Because we went over the school meal account. Is there any other information regarding the 763?
No. That's just the rules.
Just all associated. Okay.
The 763s are like the formal district policy, and then that other one is us kind of paraphrasing it into something a little bit more.
Okay. So no other changes?
No.
Okay.
Just the posting.
Okay. If there are no other comments, we will move into the Three Lakes School District Library Plan Report.
Okay. I just have a few notes to share from Beth Martin, the LMS that we contracted with this past year. I want to say she did a fantastic job getting us to where we needed to be with submitting the library plan with DPI. She did some collection and goal development, and just wanted to review with you that in January of 2025, the library pair of professionals began to develop current collection to continue to buy and support materials that meet within our needs of the district. They're looking to get this completed by December 2027. They managed to complete a full inventory of the materials at the three library media centers. She was unable to determine when the last full report was done, but she did believe it was probably at least 10 years ago. At this point, the items are all listed in the catalog that we have on the shelves, and the books and materials that have been lost have been deleted from the catalog if they couldn't be found. In April, a representative came to the district from Bound to State Bound Book Company, presented to our staff. We also worked with Pilot Destiny to work a, collect, an analysis of the collection. They determined that it would be helpful to do some purchasing of items that already come bound and processed, because the manpower to do it did not equate to being very effective. So there was a move with some materials in that direction. The library staff were given specific purchasing suggestions for periodicals and what they can refer to in the future. And she provided for me some material selection policy that she had gathered and is giving to us, which is perfect for our timing with our other policy reviews that will be coming up. Nothing has been determined at this point. I wanted to also mention that she worked closely with Caleb through the business office to try to see how those funds would best be spent with the Common School Funds, and then that she and Megan, who has left, but Megan, the pair that was here last year, they attended the conference last March, and Keisha Holger and Megan had, actually, they both attended as well. And they shared their information. They felt it was very good for them. However, a lot of it, as they shared with me, was a little bit over their head. That's why we needed to have a library media specialist. Now, Beth is done with us. We have hired Paula Hayes. As you realize, she is part-time, but she is full of energy and already getting to it. She has been working with staff, working with Caleb and Steve, ordering resources for, especially at the 712, looking at the focus on research, writing, college prep. She really wants to work with our English teaching staff, as well as our elementary staff, to help them understand the different databases and what's available. So all in all, a lot was very, a lot was accomplished in a relatively short period of time, and there's a really great working framework that we will continue to update, and you will see Paula with you later in the year, and we have an update at the next time. And that's for you for tonight. Any questions?
If there are none, we will move into School Forest Camp 3 update report.
I have no report as far as the legal matter goes. The timeline to file for appeal has come and gone. We have not received any notification that anything has proceeded at this point. I look forward to updating you if anything comes your way, but that is not anticipated at this point. Don't have anything more on that specifically. We are getting interest already. The time is here. Staff is requesting availability of going out to the forest. It looks fantastic. We're arranging for bus rides. I'm sure we're gonna have to get our porta potty out there pretty quick again and start using it for the small scale. We're looking at getting the curriculum writing really moving. There is a few teachers who are quite interested in getting this off the ground again, and that is, again, under Justin, under his supervision, as he is coordinating that and has been leading the communication with staff. So more to come.
Wonderful. That's a positive happening.
That absolutely is. You bet it is.
Perfect. Okay. Next is district-related positive happenings. Mr. Busco, would love to hear how your new?
Yeah. Would love to share. Yeah, we welcomed six new staff members across the district on Tuesday. It was a great day. We started the day with 90's country, so the day was.
Nothing better.
A high note from the start. Just a really good group, lots of energy, asked some great questions. We had students from our FBOA officer team, give them a tour of our building, our district. We took a couple vans over to Sugar Camp. On the way, stopped at the school forest, kind of pointed all that out, did a tour of Sugar Camp, because we have some staff over there, and then ended the day at cross-country with a great meal and some great hospitality there. So, yeah, it was a really good day.
Wonderful.
And thank you for supporting the efforts, that new staff day. It was, I'm gonna ask for some feedback in a couple weeks and check in with them, but yeah, it was a really good day. Had some new teacher mentors there as well. It was just a great day, so.
Thank you for putting that all together. That's really exciting.
It's really fun.
Steve or Keri? Anything to share?
I mean.
Yeah.
A busy, fun-filled day.
It was.
Lots going on.
Mr. Gruzinski, how's the new office?
I haven't been over there too much, but it's good. It's set up. We're rolling, so hopefully I can get over there more the rest of the week.
Currently, his office here is the tech closet.
Don't go in there.
He has been hopping. Today was a busy day. I think it is the first time we ever had our first day with staff, fall on a board meeting day that I can recall, and maybe should have recognized that, but it wouldn't have changed anything anyways. It just made for hopping from one thing to the next. I felt like it was a really good day. Lot of activity, lot of training happening, building meetings were actually able to happen today, which is really nice when the first day in the schedule allows for that. Had a nice breakfast this morning, thanks to Nikki and Shannon for getting everything set up and ready to go for us, and just a really good positive vibe. I think people are feeling good about being back. The next two weeks, we have an awful lot going on, but feel really good about what we're doing with our training and what we've already laid for the groundwork and plan to continue developing as we go through the year.
Well, I super enjoyed the Facebook welcome message from you, Mr. Busco, and I read the Sugar Camp email that you sent out in entirety, even though I don't have any children there, and I was like, I couldn't, I was riveted. I was like.
It was very good.
I loved things. I'm like, that was fantastic. I thought that was a great thing. So I thought that was a very positive thing. I wrote that down, so I wouldn't forget the saying, because I was very proud of both of you. That's where my heart's at.
Mark had one go out also, just went out different. He, I think he had it sent, so that all staff didn't get it. That's why he didn't see his, but he had one also.
Oh, see, I thought it was still on the Sugar Camp newsletter. I thought it was still, like, Sugar Camp message, I thought it was special, like, I got it, because I passed it there.
I was gonna email somebody and say, Mike's getting next.
I know, but I loved it. I read it entirely.
Did you want us to keep sending you that?
I love it. I like being on the list.
Apparently, yes. Yeah, just keep her on the list.
I still miss it. My heart will always be there.
Sorry, Stacy, I feel bad you didn't get my letter.
I would have read it. More than I would have. I was like, just, it's great. So good job.
If there is not anything else, next we have WASB correspondence and updates.
Okay. The main thing I have is I just put out the final resolutions on the table, should any of you want to review them. These are the resolutions that we reviewed at length before they were voted on, and now the finalized copy has come to be. In addition to that, I believe you have something.
Yes. Just so everyone is aware, I attended the beginning, the meeting of CISA 9 for the 42nd Annual Convention. Just so you are aware, if anyone has interest, Three Lakes has historically had a seat on the CISA 9 Board of Control. We do not currently have a seat on that board. However, where is my paper? There it is. In 2026, at the meeting, which occurs typically the first Monday in August, there'll be a medium school opening for that Board of Control. I just wanted to put that out to the rest of the board. I did not seek election on that board this year. There was one incumbent for medium school districts, and then there was another individual who was hyper-interested in the position out of Mozenee. So those are the two that took it for this year. But if anyone has interest, and I think Terry, in our board documentation, there is an opening for election for the WASB Board of Directors as well. That election, those election papers, if anyone is interested, are due to be submitted by September 6th of 2025. So that position would start in 2026 at the conference.
Very good. Yes, and I do have the application here, if anybody is interested in filling that out. If that is the case, we should get that done very quickly. It's coming up quickly. In addition, the dinner that will take place for Region 2 is scheduled for October 16th at the Norwood Pines in Monaca. That's a regular event that is held about this time every year. We would like to find out when you know if you're attending, so we can get our reservations made. There are other scheduled meetings, including one that would be virtual, should you not be able to attend and want to, and we do have that information, that we can actually scan it and send it to you as well. But that has just recently come out. Aside from that, I have two notifications that probably our board president also received. The first one is to Josh Crowell. Josh, congratulations, you have achieved Level 3 in the Wisconsin Association of School Board Member Recognition. This program recognizes board members for their efforts in leadership and board development. Points are awarded to school board members for attending or participating in various WASB programs and events. And they just went on to say thank you for your service and wanted to make sure we knew about that. And also, Mitch Ellis, congratulations, you have achieved Level 1 in the WASB Member Recognition Program. This recognizes your efforts in leadership and board development, and the points are awarded to school board members for attending or participating. Again, this will be seen more recognition when we attend the October 16th meeting at Norwood Pines. So thank you both of you for continuing to serve on the board.
Do you want answers now, after the meeting?
I would, yeah.
I will attend the October 16th.
Okay.
Very good.
Can I let you know?
Yes, absolutely.
It's Russell's 21st birthday. I'm not sure he really wants to spend any time with me on that date, but I better ask just in case, otherwise, maybe I'll have to have a cocktail there in honor for my kid 321. Of course, Heinz makes a great old-fashioned. Say it.
Maybe you can pick him up on the way home.
Yes. Nikki will send out a communication again with that date, and if you could just confirm with her what your preference is, then we'll just hammer a tally going on.
It isn't a school board night, is it?
It is not. It's Thursday. They switched it to Thursday versus Wednesday.
Oh, that's why I'm confused, because it says Wednesday, October 16th. No, that's not Russell's birthday. Russell's birthday is Wednesday, the 15th. Okay, that's why I'm confused.
Okay, that's my error, because it does say Thursday here.
Okay. Thursday, the 16th.
Wednesday, the 15th is our normal board.
Right.
Because they did that last year. That's why we couldn't attend last year, because it was a board night.
Thank you for that catch.
And if anyone has any additional questions on the elections or what that entails, feel free to reach out. Okay. Anything else on WASB?
No, not for me.
Okay. Next, we will adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C. Is anyone willing to make a motion as such?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851C.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Josh, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening, and good luck with the start of the school year.
Thank you.